Whoever is working PAC TV, please give me a chat when we are live. And we are live, so I will call tonight's Lunenburg Select Board to order. This is the Lunenburg Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, April 6, 2021. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access Channel. Town of Lunenburg in response to the COVID-19 pandemic is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent its spread. All town facilities are open by appointment only. Nope, not by appointment only. They're open and then outside of normal hours by appointment only. Excuse me. In accordance with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chap. 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. This meeting will be broadcast live through the local access cable, on Facebook Live, on the public access Facebook page, and will be available to be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after its conclusion. If you have a smart device, a computer, a smartphone, a tablet, and you would like to participate in tonight's meeting, please use the Zoom app. And tonight's Zoom webinar ID is 909-174-0347. If you would like to join but don't have access to a smart device, you can use your phone and dial in 1-888-475-4499. And once again, the webinar ID is 909-174-0347. For those using the app, please acquaint yourself with the or familiarize yourself with the Raise Your Hand, which is under the reactions icon in the bottom of your screens or somewhere in your application. And if you are on the phone and you want to raise your hand, dial *9. This will indicate to the host, being me, that your hand is raised, and I will call upon you at the proper time. This agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and all those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions, and not all items listed may in fact be discussed. And other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. That being said, I will turn it over to Ms. Adams, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment from the board this evening? Ms. Adams?
I made a similar comment, I think, at the end of last meeting, just that this week is a return to school. Five days a week for, I guess, most cohorts coming together, which means there's about double the amount of kids going to school each day. And so people have probably already noticed even just on Monday, a different routine with buses being out and things like that. So just be aware of that. And then also, just a lot of patience and empathy still involved, even though this is the first week back. I heard today that over 50 kids were sent home from school, from the high school. So as everybody embarked on creating what was supposed to be a welcome back environment, it's actually one of the, I think, biggest quarantines issued today. So as everybody tries to start to get into a new rhythm, we're just, the unpredictability continues, and I know that's really hard on people. And so just best of luck to everybody as we continue to try to adapt to things outside of our control.
Thank you. And I agree. Any other public comment from the board? Any public comment from the public? I see no hands raised, so I will assume there is no public comment from the public.
You do have a raised hand, Mr. Chair.
I do now, yes, okay. Whoever's calling on the phone, 400-1128. You're on the line.
Hi, this is Rhonda Lucio at 181 Reservoir Road.
Good evening.
My comments are regarding the article being proposed by the Select Board to amend the APD bylaw. Last week, I submitted a public records request for all correspondence between the board and the APDC. I received two letters in the minutes of the January joint meeting. It took me approximately five minutes to identify where I thought the communication breakdown occurred in the meeting. An ADPC member presented an option of preserving only the shell of the building, which would satisfy both the bylaw and the Select Board's desire to use the property as a green space with a sheltered area. Instead of exploring this option with questions such as exactly how much of the shell of the structure would need to remain to satisfy the bylaw? And in what ways can the structure be altered in order to possibly be repurposed on the site? And would this option allow for a future structure to be erected if ever needed? The Select Board insisted demolition of the entire structure was the only option, even though demolition of the same building was not supported by annual town meeting vote in the past. As a voter, I would prefer being provided with the dollar amount it would cost the town to comply with its own bylaws. The dollar amount to preserve just the shell of the building could have been determined using the Vertex Report. Instead, the board was too fixated on its questionable and historically inaccurate prediction of how town meeting voters will vote on this issue. What does conducting this review of the record reveal? It reveals the article being proposed has no real value because it teaches us nothing about compromise or our own bylaws. If the board asked questions, we would all have a better understanding of how we are defining preservation and if the definition needs to be changed. This would make more sense than the article being proposed, which would jeopardize all town structures, which are the centerpiece of the entire district. I am relieved at least one Select Board member did not recommend approval of this article. From the moment she became involved in town government, she has demonstrated one of the most important qualities in determining who is fit to serve in a leadership role. She ends more sentences with a question mark than with a period. This is exactly why she has my endorsement for reelection to the Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the public? Seeing none. I have no announcements. Madam Town Manager, do you have any announcements?
I do not.
Okay. So appointments at 7:05 PM. We have an update from the Lunenburg Skateboard Park Group. I am going to unmute Mr. Coyote.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso.
All right, you have the floor. I guess you are the sole representative tonight.
Tonight, yes. Yeah, the boys actually are loaded down with homework and just logistically made it easier, simpler, cleaner, just to give you guys a quick update, take some questions, and let y'all get back to your business. So I wanted to prize everyone as to where we're at in the process, give you an update on who, what we've been up to for the past. I think it's been six months since we've done an update. And I guess I'd give you guys the opportunity to ask questions. So a couple of key talking points. So we have been heavily affected by COVID, like all other nonprofits. And we continue to network through the industry to derive best practices and make sure that, you know, we are doing everything possible to stay engaged. We did have a raffle that was largely online. Last summer, late last summer, we did raffle off a tractor that was donated by Pallistone and Gravel. And that went actually terribly well for us, which is great. We had an immense amount of success from the community. We sold a couple of hundred tickets for the tractor. And then on the heels of that, we were able to align with the folks at the National Park Service who took an interest in our team. And they've got a constituency of about 60,000 members. So they did an interview with the boys over Zoom that was crafted into something that was actually rather compelling. And it went out en masse, which led to some introductions to other folks in the skating industry that they were able to make connections with. And I'll get back to that in a second. But I have the boys submitted for a speaking opportunity at the National Park Service National Trade Show down in Tennessee this September. So hopefully they'll be selected as speakers so they can get up on stage in front of people and continue to practice their craft and tell people their story. So that's what's happening on the PR front. We're still actively engaged with a couple of news stations. Hopefully, once things come down a little bit later this summer, they'll be coming out to Lunenburg to do an interview with the boys to capture, you know, a bit more of a wider audience, to be able to help them get the word out. And in the process, you know, we reinstated our weekly meeting, so we meet every Monday night at 8:00 PM for about an hour, maybe worst case, an hour and a half. And we've had, for the last couple of months, in extremely full schedule, we've had about six or seven skate park designers and builders come talk with us about, you know, their vision for our facility, learn a bit more about them, their building, design styles, habits, best practices, you know, what should we be thinking about considering as we go through this process? We've also met with Senator Cronin. We've met last night with Lori Trahan's office, so we're talking with them about a number of things. We're also meeting next week, I believe, with the folks from the U.S. Skateboard Education Association. We've also taken interest in the team and, you know, using them as their poster children to help get out to the industry, you know, what's possible when youth put their minds into action. And we've also met with the Friends of the Library. We're putting on an event with them a bit later this year inside the library, once again, once COVID subsides a bit and assuming we stay on the trajectory that we're on. We've just reached 75,000 in cash and in-kind donations that we've booked to date. And we're in the process of overhauling our website. So we're actually putting together a formal website, a lot more than just, you know, the single page that we've had in place for the last three years. So we've got a team of five people working on that right now, some folks in the social space that are really looking to, you know, make this a part of, you know, people's vernacular and a source for information so we can engage with our constituents on a much more regular basis. So we've got people that are putting some mechanics in place there. Our next event that is planned is a Learn to Skate Day. So we've got 80 slots available today online. We just announced the event a couple of days ago. And this is a opportunity for new skateboarders to get on a board for the first time. We're going station format and with timed slots to keep, you know, crowds to a minimum. Everything will be, you know, totally above board as far as, you know, COVID restrictions go, at least according to, you know, the rules that are in place today. And to give people the ability to spend about half an hour working through stations to understand basic mechanics of the sports, how to get on boards, fall off boards, and do it in a very safe and controlled environment. And as an educational experience to bring new people up to speed on the sport. And this is something that we're working with the folks at the United States Skateboard Education Association on that are focused on bringing this event nationwide to communities like ours. So it's part of a much larger movement. So it's great to be part of that and be able to give back as well. And last but not least, on our litany of activities, we've been actively talking with the Parks Department about potentially building this park at Marshall Park and what that would involve, what would the potential design considerations be for that facility? And that's just a dialogue that is underway and is evolving slowly. You know how these things work. Nothing's going to happen overnight, but it's definitely a very active dialogue.
Excellent. Thank you for that update. I see, I think some of your team have joined. I don't know if they want to speak or not.
I think they're good. I think they were going to come just to listen, just to listen.
Okay, well, then I will open it up to the board if anybody on the board has any questions on that update. Ms. Adams?
Sure, I just wanted to, I know you mentioned Marshall Park. Is there a consensus, like, on that being a desired location? I think last time we had met, there was still a lot of desire to explore the TCP land. So is everybody sort of connecting on the idea of Marshall Park?
It's an active dialogue. There's not been, hasn't been much provided by way of details from the Parks Commission yet, so we really don't have anything to make a decision based on. So it's really very much in its early stages, to be totally honest.
And then as a follow-up, and I don't know if it's to you or to the town manager, they added on capital planning. You know, the study of Marshall Park's potential remodel, are we engaged with them on that plan if it goes through town meeting?
Is the board engaged or is...?
Just the town, I guess, just someone, so that it's, you know, a piece of the puzzle if that is indeed what's going to happen.
I believe that is a consideration that would be taken up during the master planning process is potential space for the skate park. Thank you.
So as that dialogue evolves, eventually they'll be, I think, in a position to be able to be a bit more prescriptive to us as a team. So we can have, you know, an apples-to-apples comparison and be able to, you know, weigh pros and cons of both facilities and make an intelligent decision.
Sure.
With the money allotted for the Marshall Park redesign, if that goes through, that'll give them a lot more to work with tangibly instead of just in the abstract. So that will be very helpful to them in their planning.
Exactly.
We certainly, as a board, hope that goes through. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Coyote from the board? Well, I want to thank you for providing the update. I want to thank you for you and the whole team and your continued work in this effort. I know, I know you know it's a lot of work. I know the team knows it's a lot of work, but I really, I think everyone benefits from this, and I really want to see this come to a good fruition, God willing, in a not-too-distant future, so.
We share the sentiment. We appreciate your time.
I saw some skateboarders outside of Town Hall today, may have been a relative of yours, and I thought, oh, they need a park.
Exactly.
Super.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to interviews, appointments, reappointments, resignations. So we have some Select Board appointments to the Cultural Council. We have Daniel Burns at 20 Eastern Ave is being nominated to be appointed to term to expire June 30, 2024. And Donna Saya of 32 Sandy Cove Road, term to expire the same day, June 30, 2024. I see we have Mr. Burns with us. I am going to ask him to unmute. And we have, we have his Talent Bank form in the, in our Google Drive, so good evening, Mr. Burns, and welcome to the board.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here.
I will open it up to you and let you introduce yourself and to everybody listening, including the board, and then why you want to be on the Cultural Council.
Sure. So as stated, my name is Dan Burns, a relatively new resident of Lunenburg. This will be our third year here in town. And the Cultural Council was something I was immediately drawn to when we first moved here, and I started looking at ways to become more involved with the town. I'm a big believer in funding, promoting, and assisting in any way that I can, the growth and prevalence of the arts and performance and other ways to unite a community through cultural expression. So the opportunity to do that for my new hometown is a really big motivating factor for me to be able to help shape Lunenburg, you know, as I hope it continues to grow and diversify for my children that are going to be growing up here. I have worked in art, the arts and nonprofit for a number of years. I have seven years working for a 501(c)(3) educational nonprofit that also did a lot of arts and cultural grants. I'm also a living history actor myself, so I'm intimately familiar with the processes of applying for these grants, what the requirements are, and just how valuable they can be to all kinds of organizations, you know, libraries, schools, as well as, you know, individuals. And I think it's a great way to enrich the town and keep it vibrant and alive. And that's really what brings me here.
Excellent. Have you met with the people on, any, any members of the Cultural Council yet?
I had a brief phone call. And that's about it. This all happened quite quickly after submitting my Talent Bank form, so.
All right, so a testament that government can work fast sometimes, so that's good. I would open it up to the board if anybody has any questions for Mr. Burns. Mr. Jeffries?
Thanks. I'd like to, I noticed on the Talent Bank form that Mr. Burns is an Iraq War veteran, so I want to acknowledge that and thank Mr. Burns for his service to our country. It's so important for, for all of us who've served in some kind of way to continue that service, and I want to thank you for that and for stepping up to assist our town and with your skills. So thank you so much.
All right. It was my pleasure, so.
Ms. Adams?
A similar sentiment, just sounds like a wonderful resume, and so thank you for joining.
I'm excited to be able to be more active in the town and to help in any way I can.
Excellent. Being in the art, by education, being in the arts myself and a big supporter, I'm glad that, I mean, this council has a very close part in my heart to this, so I appreciate you coming forward. And from the things you've said and what you wrote on the Talent Bank form, it sounds like a really excellent fit, so.
So I would make a motion, if we're ready, for Daniel Burns to the Cultural Council, term to expire June 30, 2024.
A second then.
Any further discussion? Roll call, vote. Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Mr. Marino?
Aye.
And an aye from myself. So congratulations. The next thing you should do is make a stop off at your convenience to the town clerk to be sworn in. And then, Madam Town Manager, is, can we have somebody from the Cultural Council, or are we going to alert the Cultural Council that he was appointed?
We can do that, yes.
We'll let them, we'll let the council know that you were appointed this evening.
Right. Thank you very much. Government can indeed work quickly sometimes.
All right. It's good to know sometimes. Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, next up is Donna Saya from 32 Sandy Cove Road, who I'm going to ask to unmute.
Hi. I have no idea where the... Yes, I am.
Okay, well, welcome.
Hi.
So for those who don't know you, I would ask the same thing that I asked Mr. Burns, which is if you could introduce yourself briefly. Oh, you, now there's your video, okay.
Yeah.
And just, just say who you are and, you know, a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on the, serve on the Cultural Council.
My name is Donna Saya. Like you said, I live at 32 Sandy Cove Road. And I am interested in participating in the Cultural Council because art is my background and all things creative. I am an artist, a fine artist, as well as a writer. And I'd like to see people have opportunities to show their work, explain their work, teach their work, and I'd like to be involved in that.
Sounds excellent. I would open up to the board for questions from Messiah. I will say that I know Messiah very well in town, so I can attest to her being an excellent artist and and I don't know that I've ever read anything by you, Donna, but I've certainly seen enough of your visual arts work. So I think you'd be an excellent, an excellent member of the Cultural Council. And I know you promote the arts in every way, not only in town, online, et cetera, so I appreciate you stepping forward.
Okay.
Ms. Adams?
Just the same as we had said prior, just thank you. I know that we always announce our vacancies, and there's, I think, a goal to have zero, so it seems like we have filled two spots tonight with really great residents, so thank you.
There are no more questions. I would entertain a motion from a member of the board regarding Messiah's Talent Bank form and willingness to be appointed to the Cultural Council.
Sure, I would make a motion that we appoint Donna Saya to the Cultural Council, term to expire June 30, 2024.
Five seconds.
Aye.
Okay. Any further discussion? So roll call, vote. Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Marino?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
And an aye from myself. So Messiah, again, next step is to the town clerk to get sworn in. And then we will alert the Cultural Council to your appointment, and then you can rendezvous with them at their next meeting.
All right, sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks again for volunteering.
Okay, happy to.
All right.
Bye.
Okay, the next on the agenda, Select Board Appointment to the Green Communities Task Force, Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street. So before I open this up, I mean, unlike the other two, like Cultural Councils, we can appoint up to 23 people. And although it's a standing committee, we never run out the risk of filling up that council. This one is something that is part of our normal cycle of standing committees that have appointments and reappointments, all that are going to be coming up at the end of this year. This one doesn't show an expiration date or a term. And I just question whether we should just wait for this appointment when we do the other appointments at the end of June, and therefore, I don't even know if there are any applicants in the Talent Bank form for the Green Communities Task Force too, but this would give them an opportunity. It just seems kind of an odd, an odd timing to appoint this person to this committee for, well, unless, unless the term is wrong, it looks like we may have to do it again in two months. So I just throw that out there as a matter of the committee being appointed to, so. Any thoughts from the rest of the board?
Yeah, I have a question on that.
Mr. Jeffries?
In our Google Drive, we have a list of, we have a list of appointments, and I don't see that we have Green Community Tax Force coming up for appointments.
Let's...
I think we have a couple of Daves that could probably weigh in.
Yes, I see Mr., I'll unmute Mr. Blatt, who's the chair of that committee first.
Once you volunteer, we do not let you leave.
Hi, guys. I appreciate you looking into this for us. I don't know if you, for, most of you folks weren't there when they first started the Green Community and the Green Group, Green Team, whatever we want to call ourselves. It was originally a group of seven that was appointed with three alternates. Over the years, we've had members come and go. You dropped it down to a group of five. And right now, for about two years, we've been living with three members. So we can use all the help we can get right now, because, you know, obviously with only three members of a group of five, it becomes difficult at times to get a quorum together and to do the things we want to do for the, for the town when it comes to scheduling meetings. So we welcome Mr., you know, Mr. Passios has made several of our meetings. We welcome him to join up. He's had some great inputs, and we welcome him as a new, you know, as a potential new member.
Do we have, Madam Town Manager, do we have, well, I guess I can look it up online, what the terms are. I mean, you're saying for two years... if what the what the terms are. I mean, you're saying for two years, you've only had three members, Mr. Blatt?
That is correct, roughly two years. I'll, I I mean, time flies when we're having so much fun, but it's been a a long time since we've had anything more than three members.
I'm looking that up as well. Um, I looked at an old annual report to see if that would indicate a term. I don't see it. There's no term on there, so I'll keep looking.
I mean, remember, guys, we're in a, you know, it's an appointed, we're a group that's appointed by you. So, um, you know, I I don't know.
And those appointments are usually due in in, again, not every member of every board, but cyclically, they're done at the end of, at the end of June. And so that's why I'm questioning the timing of this, not not anything else. I'm just like, we're going to be going through a whole round of appointments and it just, I mean, you have any meetings planned between now and June?
Uh, yes, we're gonna, uh, well, right now, we're working towards the streetlights. So um, the schedule is actually getting busier for, you know, busier. Usually, we only meet about three to four times a year, but now with the streetlights coming up, we've, we will be meeting more often as we get ready for the RFPs and to um, uh, get the grant, the grant uh, application together.
Good. Ms. Adams.
Sure, I was wondering in terms of this not being um, in our um, uh, annual appointments, is is the concept of it having originally been put together as a task force, does that change the way it was um, built in the beginning in the sense that we didn't apply terms and whatnot to it? I'm not sure when it was um, begun, but that's what I'm thinking. It it seems like it didn't get structured like a um, a board or committee would have, and perhaps that's in its origins.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we are a Green Community Task Force originally. I think our name was.
But that got converted to a standing committee several years ago. Are you shaking your head, Madam Town Manager? It was never converted?
No, it's still, the title is still a Green Community Task Force.
I thought once we were a Green Community, we modified that to change it to a standing committee. If not, that was an oversight and we need to address that.
It was never changed.
Okay, well.
It's similar to the Stormwater Task Force. So becoming a Green Community wouldn't influence it whether it be a task force or a committee?
No, but I think we did in the town. We we, once we became, first it was, do we want to do it? But once we were adopted as a Green Community, we said, we had, there were internal discussions about making it a standing committee. Obviously, I I thought that had been done you know, during my tenure that I was away, so, but obviously not, so we have to take that up, I guess. Okay, well, I mean, again, I just raised it, Mr. Jeffries.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Passios probably has the most interesting definition of retirement of anyone I've ever met. But, you know, if he's volunteering to uh, to step up to the plate till the end of June, then I'm all, I'm all for making the motion to facilitate that.
Well, I don't think we're saying till the end of June now. If it's a task force, then there are no, then he has no term.
Well, then indefinitely.
He's on it, thought it until he doesn't want to be on it anymore.
All right.
Which is why it should be moved to a standing committee, you know, so.
Are you interested in entertaining a motion, Mr. Chair?
I mean, the, well, first of all, I just wanted to know if we're having the discussion, then I'm gonna, you know, then I'll let Mr. Passio speak for himself. I just wanted to introduce what I thought was a a an issue. But if it's not a standing issue, because it's not a, it's not a committee that we're even is on our radar for appointments, reappointments in June, then I guess it's a non-issue. So I would, I guess we're going to discuss it, so I will unmute Mr. Passios and ask him as all candidates to introduce himself and why he wants to be on the Green Communities Task Force.
Thank you, Tom. Dave Passios, fifty-six Whiting Street. My first introduction to the Green Communities Task Force was a number of years ago, uh, starting to attend meetings and uh, specifically was drawn in by the Streetlight Conversation that's been going on for a lot of years uh, and didn't really uh, pick up any steam until the last year or two. Uh, so I'm I'm very interested in seeing that project through to its completion, but also have learned quite a bit about the uh, what the task force does, the monies it's brought into town. I still have a lot to learn on what, what project, what types of projects, excuse me, are eligible for Green Communities. Uh, but I see that as part of the learning curve, uh, once I am a full-fledged member. As most of you know, uh, on this board and uh, in the town government circles, um, I spent nine years on the Board of Health. Just recently resigned from the Board of Health to move to elected position at Parks. I'm also on the Finance Committee, and I am the Finance Committee Representative to the T C Passios Design Committee and the Capital Planning Committee. And yes, I do still have room in my life to uh, add this to my resume for the time being. I guess that's it. Uh, I I have a grave, a great interest in the town of Lunenburg, born and raised here. Anybody that knows me knows that I'm very much engaged uh, with the town, town finances and town government. Thank you.
I would open it up to the board if they have any questions for Mr. Passios. I will say for one that, uh, first of all, I thank you for all your service in those in those areas. I would also say that at any, and I despite, despite this potentially being an unpopular position, I think there's a a limit to how many positions and how many appointed bodies I'm willing to appoint somebody to and seeing as you're on an elected body and four appointed positions already, I I will not be supporting this because I think there's a limit to how many, how many positions and voices in those committees that a person would have, and it's on principle, not a reflection on you, Mr. Passios.
Totally understand.
Ms. Adams.
Um, is there any place that points to limit in the charter or whatnot? Like, is there, is there any actual um?
No.
Technical overlap? Okay, so it's just in in theory.
The only limits I'm aware of is um, one elected position.
Yes.
At a time beyond that, appointed positions are allowed.
I appreciate Mr. Passio stepping up. I mean, I will say that I I don't think that font two is possible, but I think you managed to find a way in your background, your talent bank form, that's that's the tiniest font I've ever seen.
When, when you type it on, I'm sorry, when you type it online, that that section needs to be fixed, and we've talked about that, it shrinks as you type.
Yes, but you know, I I think you're an asset to every community that you're a part of, every committee and board that you're a part of. Uh, certainly a huge asset uh, to our town, and I have no doubt that you and Mr. Blatt will uh, work very well together. So uh, if if Mr. Alonso's open, I will make a motion to uh, appoint Mr. Passio to the Green Community Task Force.
Okay, roll call, Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
And a no from me. Okay, well, you know the drill about getting sworn in. So, good luck with that, Mr. Blatt. You're still on the search for one more person, so.
Uh, more than one will take our alternates and everything else, so uh, we need a minimum of one. But open for anybody who wants, who want, who uh, has a passion to save this town money.
I appreciate that. Madam Town Manager, I guess, and the board, I guess we need to put this on our agenda at some future agenda item to talk about creating, making this a standing committee and formalizing this, so.
I I just, I just fear if we become standard that we might lose our members here. You know, we like being the road group here. Now, I'm only kidding with you, Mr. Chair.
We'll take our chances, Mr. Blatt.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
All right, old business. So we're going to discuss this agenda item of annual Select Board Appointments Process Discussion was to discuss what the current process is. Since we didn't adopt something new, we're just going to review briefly what the current the current policy is, so everybody is aware of that. And that can be found, uh, as was brought up to us several times here in section two point oh seven of the Select Board Policies on Appointments. Has everybody read this policy, by the way? Okay. So we have, everybody should have received the list from the uh, the Executive Secretary of the Board of Selectmen, uh, Elaine Peterson has provided a list of who is coming, uh, whose terms are expiring, and that list went to them as well as us and should have gone to all the chairs too, I believe, but definitely to the people. And she attached the reappointment form, which is still in force. So we still have a reappointment form that is being forwarded to the Board of Committee, asking for their review and response relating to the reappointment. That saying that the Town Manager will assure that the Selectmen receive by May first a list of appointments and reappointments to be filled by the board, so that, including all those reappointment forms back, although I think Elaine is asking for them much sooner if possible. So once we have those forms and any new forms for Talent Bank, uh, we will ensure that local papers are advised of the vacancies and that vacancy notices are posted on the town bulletin board, advertised on the town's website and the local access television channel. So we need to do that, that will be the next step. And vacancies shall be so advertised on the town's bulletin board for less, no less than ten days. The Chairman of each of the Board's Committees or Commissions on which a vacancy occurs will see Talent Bank forms and nomination recommend, recommendations from a majority of the relevant committees. So again, anybody who's putting in a Talent Bank form is requested to meet with that board or committee or commission and meet with them so they can have an interview locally there so they can provide recommendations. At which point, the board will decide when we will be holding appointment meetings, make those known. And and then the Executive Secretary will try to schedule all the applicants or, you know, applicants for appointment or reappointment for interviews if they so choose. It says that the requirement there's actually no requirement to be on added board meeting to be nominated or elected, although it is heavily recommended, especially for new applicants, for people who the board knows less important because they have a record and familiarity to go by. But by the proceed, the policy here, they don't have to show up. Is there any questions about this policy, about what we're about to do? I mean, what we're going to try to do is if there are multiple people going for, if there are more people applying for appointment or reappointment, then there are seats in that committee. We're going to try to interview those people on the same day to make it as fair as possible. Sometimes it's not possible because of people's schedules, but we are going to try to do that. So we hear from those people vying for the same seat at the same day. Think that's the whole policy. Did I miss anything? Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Adams.
Sure, I have a question in regards to just having talked about the task force and whatnot. Um, with some of these things that have been cycling around for a long time, the terms are always announced. And then with something like the TCP Building Design Committee, when that was fairly newly formed and everybody was um, appointed together, I don't recall applying terms to those. Um, so do some of these groups not have terms applied to them? For like, let's say there's one vacancy, does everybody else just stay on it indefinitely, like with the task force? Or do we sort of miss the opportunity to um, have terms applied for something that may end up being around longer than anticipated or something like that?
Well, ad hoc and advisory committees are formed from time to time to assist in specific tasks. It is generally realized that those committees don't have a long lifespan to begin with. So like the TCP will have, it may be a year or so, but there's no term because once they're done, that committee will be dissolved. Now, in the Green Committee, since it's ongoing, it's not really an ad hoc committee anymore, and that's why I'm saying it should be made into a standing committee. And the Stormwater one is getting arguably close to being the same thing, that it's not just a point in time work, it's ongoing work and it'll take years. And therefore, it should probably be a standing committee that has terms and is more subject to uh, all the other rules that apply to long-term committees. But advisory committees like the T C Passios one or the Green Committee Task Force, when they started to investigate whether we should become a Green Community, those are done as as advisory ones and they don't have official terms. Yes, you're.
Sure, so the follow-up to that, then, I'm looking at the list, um, the, in the Google Drive of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, the annual appointments. And so some of the things in the annual appointment list probably don't belong there, like the TCP Building Design Committee vacancy is in that list. That's technically not an annual appointment, so I don't know if it belongs in the process. The same would be like the um, Cultural Council, and that's in the annual appointment process, yet those aren't. Does that make sense? I feel like some of these are very specifically indefinitely annual appointments or reappointments.
The Cultural Council is an ongoing one, so it definitely belongs there. The T C Passios.
But are they, are they annual is my question, because some of these things aren't, uh, don't have, I guess that we did assign terms to those, but some of these, I feel like we need to clean this up because some things have terms and some some things don't. So like the TCP Building Design Group doesn't belong in the annual appointment process if they aren't annual terms.
I have to see how that, I I I tend to agree. I have to see how it was created. I mean, if there were terms, I would probably argue that it was an advisory committee, but uh, I I guess we could look that one up. You may, that may be accurate.
Yeah, I don't think there's terms, so I, so it won't make sense to be in this list. So I guess we should go through them and make sure that we're you know, the task forces versus the ad hocks and make sure we're having this list something that is is fully consistent and fully accurate.
Madam Town Manager, is it, you have?
About the um, that would be, those members would serve until the purpose of that um, building project is complete.
So it's ad hoc and advisory, so it shouldn't be on the list then, because it should be a list that we have a vacancy, but it shouldn't be on an annual appointment list because they really don't have terms per se.
And I think the part that um, is involved in the process is, like, we we would, as a board, when a board is um, you know, after an election or something, when there's a new board and roles are shifting, you may vote someone new into the role. That may happen in the, in the planning board, it may happen in our board. So you may get new members, but it's not sourced through an expiration. It's a different process.
Right, I mean, again, it depends on how the committee is formulated, how it was created.
You can split this into two lists, meaning um, once there are terms, but by law, review committee, I mean, those are still appointments that need to be made. So typically, um, when you get Talent Bank forms and if there's people that haven't been appointed to a committee that they've requested to be appointed to, um, a suggestion is made that there's these vacancies that exist if they're interested in serving on an which is typically all done at this annual meeting.
Mr. Jeffries.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to this discussion is that our current policy does does not differentiate between um, ad hoc committees and appointed committees. That we had proposed that as a change for um, you know, the future policy, but the current one doesn't make that differentiation.
Yeah, it does, it's on the fourth to last paragraph.
Maybe I missed it.
It says, "The Board from time to time, may from time to time appoint standing or advisory committees to aid on matters under the Board's jurisdiction," so that would be. Our ability to make those committees.
I guess what I'm saying is not about our ability to make the committees, but about a separate appointment process. And we don't have a different process according to this policy. So all of it, regardless as to whether it's ad hoc or standing, it's all, it's all together, and I think that's one of the changes we are looking to make.
Again, I take the Town Manager, I take her words, that. It's still an appointment, I mean, you can certainly, for technical reasons, you can divide the list. Of appointments into two, you know, standing committees with terms and advisory and ad hoc committees, but it nonetheless doesn't change the fact that. You need to make an appointment, there are vacancies in here, and if we're going to go through an appointment. But those people don't have to necessarily provide. You know, they don't have to follow this policy, and since their terms don't expire unless they resign, there's no reappointment policy, so. It is. Yeah, I mean, certainly, they don't fit under that, but. Instead of making two separate. Agenda items or two separate schedules, we might as well put them in one because they're still appointments. So I see, I see what the Town Manager is saying, and I agree. Other than that, is there any questions about this? Everybody knows what we're going to do? All right, as long as everybody's on board that this is what's going to happen, then we're going to go forward with that process. Okay. Old Business Number Two, Discussion on Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Two Budget, Capital Plan, Financial Forecast, and Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles. And vote on any that have been deferred if needed, is there anything in this that somebody wants to address? Any of these issues? No, I don't think there was any new information, so. Okay. Current Business Number One, Discussion on the Consent Calendar for the Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles. So, for those who may not know, we tried to streamline town meeting a little bit by putting articles that. We feel would not be controversial together and pass in one unit, instead of. Introducing them, reading them, discussing them, and voting on them separately. We have done this for many, many years, and this is a time when we want to discuss what should be in that consent calendar. I will turn it over to the Madam Town Manager. To, if everybody brings up their. Warrants, which I think is in the Google Drive.
It is.
Then, she can go through things, final ATM booklet, there we go. Madam Town Manager, you have the floor.
Okay, it might be easiest to start on the, where the. List of the articles is on page eleven, starts the index.
Okay.
So, based on our last couple of town meetings. The ones, these are the ones that I would recommend, and based on discussions that have been had. By the Select Board and Finance Committee where there's. Nothing controversial about the article. Article one, reports from committees. There are none. Article two, to reauthorize revolving funds, there's no change in this article from previous annual town meetings. Article three. That is a payment on prior year expenses for a hundred and forty-five dollars. The thing controversial about that. Article four, as long as the motion is to pass over. That article, if there's nothing. There are no amendments to the fiscal twenty-one budget, I would recommend that be part of the consent calendar. At this time, we don't.
Because we don't know that. I guess we could mention it then, okay, I'm just thinking mechanics, that's all. Okay, so let's just leave it as four, all right?
Article seven, the Regular Stabilization Fund. And Article eight, the Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. Article ten, the OPEB Trust Fund. Article eleven, for the Sewer Enterprise Budget. Article twelve, for the Sewer Capital Reserve Stabilization. Article thirteen, the Solid Waste Disposal Program. Article fourteen, for the Water Enterprise Budget. Article fifteen, for the PEG Access Enterprise Budget. Article twenty-two, that's the first of the rescinding borrowing authorization. Article twenty-three is the second article to rescind borrowing. And Article twenty-seven, the Amendment to the Salary Administration Plan to Add Position Titles to the Grid.
Okay. So let's give everybody a minute. I know, in TV terms, dead air time is bad, but give everybody a minute to review. That list of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fifteen articles. So, one.
And I just want to point out too, as far as the process, how, if everyone recalls. All the motions for every one of those articles, the consent calendar will be up on the projector screen. If any one person objects to that being part of the consent calendar, that would be pulled. From that list.
Correct. And then put in its proper place and then dealt with individually when we get to it, right? Okay, seven. Eight. I don't know, I don't know why, but eleven and twelve, the two sewer articles, I wonder if they. Is there sizable enterprise funds? And people may want to hear, I mean, again. For myself, since I'm in town government, I read all these, I'm kind of prepared, but. I'm wondering if this falls into the same kind of category as a hundred and forty-five dollar prior year expense, or. Hearing town reports that don't exist, or revolving funds that haven't changed. This is pretty substantive. Even if it's, you know. Kind of a recurring. Article, those two. Same thing with thirteen. But, I guess we could put them in, and if people object, we can take them out.
Thirteen, there's no change from the prior year. Same as fifteen.
Okay. Oh, fifteen, fifteen is no change either, their capital plan is exactly the same as it was last year.
Thirteen and fourteen.
Oh, fourteen, okay. Oh, fourteen, I'm not worried about fourteen, that's just the enterprise, you know. Twenty-five thousand dollars is something to run the water department of four customers, yeah, that I understand. But fifteen too. Anyway, I don't know if anybody else feels the same way?
I think I'd be more concerned if there wasn't the opportunity to pull them out, but. So, I mean, either way is okay with me, because even yourself can, can. Can, you know, request to pull it at town meeting and discuss it more.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah. I would pull out four. And I would add in twenty-five. I think that getting a report's not very controversial.
But I think they want to give a report, so it doesn't save us anything. Twenty-five, they want to actually give the report. So they're gonna, if we okay it, what we're saving is two minutes of taking the vote.
Yeah, so.
Then they're gonna give, but they're going to give the report, so it doesn't save us. There's not going to be a whole lot of discussion of whether we hear it or not, I guess. But what'd you say, four?
I, for twenty-five, I mean, if we're. I don't think it's controversial to the articles written to accept hearing a report, and once it's approved, then we get a report. So I don't, I don't think that twenty-five is controversial, I would include that, and then number four, I would take out. And I think saving two minutes for what's probably going to be a, you know, twelve-hour day, I think I'll take the two minutes.
Twelve-hour day? Twelve-hour day? With this, with this warrant?
Are you willing to play some bets? Because I am.
Well, we'll take that offline, but.
Don't deter people from coming. If it was going to be passed over, that's the, if it wasn't going to be passed over. Meaning, if there are no changes to the fiscal twenty-one budget, we can pass over Article Four. And that's why I would include it in the consent calendar, but if not, I would keep it as an article that would be explained. Does that make sense? Yes.
Mr. Jeffries? Does that make sense to you?
It makes sense.
Okay. I brought this up last year when we did this, the only problem with including number three, Article Three. Is that that raises the whole approval to, you know, nine tenths. For what it's worth. Now, I don't think we're going to get a plethora of people, I don't know that I've ever heard anybody vote against a consent calendar, because if they objected to something, they'd want it. To be pulled out and discussed individually, so I don't know that it's a big risk, but. Anyway, it is. Some risk, I guess. But I don't hear a lot of discussion about anything else, so.
And I'll also discuss this next week, if you want to give it some more thought, but I would like to take. Some input back to the Finance Committee on Thursday. They have a consensus. On this going into town meeting.
I mean, I'll entertain a motion regarding the consent calendar of the articles the Town Manager read off, Mr. Dwyer, before we start do that, yes?
Oh, no, I was just going to say, I supported Member Jeffries' proposed change for adding. Article twenty-five to consent calendar. For the reasons that had already worried, I think we can leave four there and take it out on the day if necessary.
Can I just?
Let's leave it, I mean, again. I'm fine with twenty-five, it's not going to get voted down, so it doesn't matter. Ms. Adams, well, hold on, Madam Town Manager, yes?
I don't think we can include twenty-five if there's actually going to be a report. Discussed.
That's what I was trying to say, I didn't know if there was any statutory reason why not. I mean, we could certainly say, oh, we're going to hear it, and then when we get to it, we can hear it, but. Again, I don't know, putting in consent calendars is just to. Stop the lengthy discussion of the motion, all the procedural stuff, but. Again, this is going to have presentation with it, so. We're going to hear this article no matter what. Ms. Adams?
Sure, I was just going to say that just because something is not in the calendar does not mean that it is controversial. Non-controversial items have been included, but I think the point twenty-five is, is the fact that it's not included does not mean that it is controversial. There can be non-controversial items left out of this. Include it, it doesn't deem it controversial just by being left out, so I think that's.
So anybody who wants to make a motion. This is the time.
I would make a motion that we approve the presented consent calendar.
And just for the record, that's Articles one, two, three, four, seven, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-seven, that's what with the Town Manager presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, let's just do a roll call vote, Ms. Adams?
I have a question.
You have a question, Mr. Jeffries?
So, Town Manager mentioned that you're going to bring this back to the Finance Committee and that we could discuss this next week, what would be the? I imagine that they're going to say, pull this out, pull that out, pull this out, is that the intent? To see if they will consent as well?
I'll present it as these, the ones that I recommended to the Select Board, they voted upon, and. Making sure that there's universal agreement, because if any one of them disagrees and would. At town meeting floor would want it pulled, then obviously. It makes sense not to include it in the consent calendar.
So then next week, then we'd need to just kind of review then what they discussed. And amend our decision tonight if they did pull something.
Right.
Thank you.
We'll keep this as a standing agenda item.
Yeah, consent calendar, yeah. Okay, so now a roll call vote, Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Marino?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
An aye from me. Okay, warrants, I signed three warrants last week. An accounts payable warrant in the amount of two hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. A payroll deduction warrant in the amount of forty-nine thousand six hundred forty dollars and zero cents. And a payroll warrant in the amount of eight hundred thirty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty-three cents. Any action item issues from anybody on the board? Seeing no hands, the committee reports. I will say that the Capital Planning Committee met before this meeting this evening. To discuss potential modifications, or. To discuss potential recommendations of modifications to the Select Board's fiscal policy regarding capital planning and. Capital projects. And we unanimously decided, voted to recommend that we change the base. Threshold amount of a capital project from the current ten thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars, anything below twenty would not be considered a capital project. And would be funded in other ways. So that is headed toward the Finance Committee for their recommendation, and then both those recommendations would come to the Board of Selectmen. For our discussion and adoption or not, so. Any other committee reports, Ms. Adams?
Okay, random committee report, last week I went to the Sewer Commission meeting. To follow along, there is a citizen petition article on town meeting this year regarding Five Oak Ave. And if you go back and watch the meeting from last week, I suppose, was that April first? Last Tuesday? Nope, I'm going thirty-first, but last sewer meeting, at the beginning of the meeting, they go over. All of the information and they discuss amongst each other a lot of the history and facts and information with the sewer service area. So I found that to be like a really valuable, I'm sure they'll go over it at town meeting again. But I just wanted to wrap my head around that article, and that is a place to get some information.
Did they vote on a recommendation at that meeting?
I don't think it got to that point, I think they did feelers and got input from everybody and talked to the DPW Director. But unless it happened later in the meeting, because I was watching it prior to our meeting. When they actually discussed it on their agenda at the beginning, they didn't come to a conclusion whether or not it was handled later in the meeting, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee?
Five Chestnut, I did my wrong tree, thank you, Mr. Passios in the chat. I said oak, yeah, thank you for that.
We have maple, five maple. All right, Five Chestnut Street it is, I don't want to give people the wrong.
What will we do with that Zoom chat when we get back into the real world?
People in the audience shouting out to you.
Wave, yeah.
I understand, and I have not reviewed this committee, but I understand, Mr. Jeffries?
I was going to give a committee report for APDC, but I think you're about to say something about it, so.
No, go ahead.
So I did not attend the APDC meeting, but I did watch the APDC meeting at the end of March. And a couple of things came up in that conversation, they are looking into what can be done to preserve the old primary school. There was discussion about looking into talking to the concert, excuse me, talking to the Historical Commission. About looking to add the building into the National Register. excuse me, talking to the Historical Commission about looking to add the building into the National Register as a historical location. Uh, there was also discussion in their meeting about different funding sources to be able to preserve, um, to preserve the building. Uh, and there was some minor discussion about the, uh, article that we proposed that was forwarded over to them, um, and, uh, you know, preliminarily, there are discussions about that. And then there was a minor discussion about, I believe it was reaching out to Selectman Adams about some support. I think you can probably speak more to that. Selectman Adams, I don't, they didn't go into too much detail about, about that, but they just referenced that they had a conversation about, um, the site and, uh, and the location to try to get some clarity, but again, they, they seem to have a little bit more knowledge about that than was discussed at the meeting. So their next meeting is at the end of the month, um, uh, at, at the end of April, and uh, I think that we may want to provide some communication about, um, who has the authority to enter town buildings into the National Register, um, and whether or not that authority resides in the Select Board, or if it's open to all members of the community, uh, as well.
Okay, and that is what I was about to say. I have not heard, I have not played the meeting, but I will, just like I will with the Sewer Commission at, at Ms. Adams' recommendation. Um, but I think we need to put on a agenda item if, if this, if talking about listing something as a in a, in National Historic Register, uh, Registry, that we need to understand that process and where that authority lies and how that is done. So maybe we can inform their, their process. Ms. Adams?
Um, sure, since I was, um, uh, included in the conversation by, uh, Member Jeffries, I will, um, leave out any room for mystery. Um, I was contacted by a member to, um, talk about some things that had come up at our meeting, um, and also I am the, um, representative from our Board for the Town Green Concept, um, on that site. And so I was able to discuss sort of what our goal had been, um, in seeing the future land potential at that parcel, but also respecting, obviously, that I have a, a history of, of just being involved in the concept of, of both land and building preservation. Um, it had come up at one of our, um, meetings when we were discussing the, um, T C Passios, um, information, the eighteen to twenty-one million dollar quotes that were coming as, uh, of this, this building having possible potential, this site and or building having potential to be studied as a town hall. And so they, um, obviously would be excited about any, uh, we see any, um, concept that could lead preservation of the buildings. I think it was at the joined us for, and, um, I had said, um, uh, you know, one possible path to nation of this building, it may be a better town hall than TCP, and that might be that people could advocate looking into. So that's sort of to, uh, connect where I came into the conversation there was, was planting the seed that that is a possibility, but also just, uh, being the representative of this board on the, uh, uh, Town Green Concept, which could incorporate the building or demolish the building, really, um, improving the land around that area doesn't necessarily mean the building has to go.
Thank you. Okay, any other committee reports? And you said the APDC was last night, Mr. Jeffrey?
No, no, they were the, they're in the last, the fourth week of the month, so that was the twenty-fourth. Um, it was the twenty-fourth of March, I believe.
Thank you. All right. Town Manager Report and COVID-nineteen Updates.
I'll start with the COVID-nineteen update. Short, just statistics from the Board of Health. The, as of, um, April second, the total positive confirmed case, cases in Lunenburg were seven-hundred-and-ten. The state report indicated six-hundred-and-seventy-five cases as of March thirtieth. There have, there has been one death in town since the pandemic began, and the total, uh, number of cases since last week has increased by eighteen.
And I just, I guess it should be noted that starting yesterday, the eligibility age was reduced to fifty-five and over for anybody looking to get the vaccine, so.
Or, um.
I only know that because it includes me, although, uh, lots of fully booked under CVS.com, uh, still is the norm, so.
Yes, or persons with one, uh, medical condition.
One comorbidity, uh. I'm glad that they introduced the word comorbidity. It's not very often you get to use that word.
Lots of new terms in this pandemic. Announcement of existing vacancies. There's one vacancy in the Architectural Preservation District Commission. Four vacancies on the Bylaw Review Committee, one vacancy on the Green Communities Task Force, one vacancy on the Historical Commission, two vacant positions on the Housing Authority, one vacancy on the TCP Building Design Committee, one vacancy on the Senior Workoff Program Committee, and one associate vacancy for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Anyone interested in serving on any of these committees can fill out an application form, which can be found on the town website, and completed forms can be sent to the Select Board's office. Update on the debris found on the Woodruff property. Last week, I reached out to the consultant that will be performing a environmental site assessment at that location, and he is planning on visiting the site this week. Update from the state on the construction on Mass Ave, the bridge over Pearl Hill Brook. Mass DOT and their contractor for the replacement of this bridge are scheduled to begin work shortly. The bridge is located just east of the intersection of Mass Ave and Richards Way, which is near, uh, Ma- Mackey Building Center. Signs for construction are going up and message boards are out to keep drivers updated, so please watch for changes. The first phase of the construction will reduce Mass Ave to a singling width, and traffic flow will be controlled by temporary traffic signals. During this phase, Richards Way at Mass Ave will be blocked, and residents in the neighborhood will be detoured up White Street to the northern end of Richards Way, where the existing gate will remain open for access to residents. The shift in traffic pattern is scheduled for April twelfth. This detour will be in Phase One of the project and will last approximately ten weeks. There'll be a large detour that will be used eight to ten nights randomly over the course of the year to set the barrier and pave. Those detour hours will be seven PM to five AM, and residents and businesses will have access to their properties. Phases two and three of the project will have two-way traffic. Mass DOT will have detour signs installed, and signs will be covered until they're needed and covered again when done to avoid any confusion. The DPW will post additional updates to the construction as they receive them from Mass DOT. Earth Day townwide activities that are going on. The Lunenburg Turkey Hill Family Lions Club is organizing volunteers to do a spring cleanup at the Town gazebo in the center of town on Saturday, April seventeenth. The DPW is providing bags for the continuation of the annual neighborhood cleanup. If you're interested in helping clean up your neighborhood, you can stop by the DPW during their office hours and get bags and notify the DPW once they need to be collected. Invitation for bids and requests for proposals. We received six bids for the work for the Complete Streets Project. Richard Di Ambrosia, Inc., provided the low bid of a hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and has been issued a notice of award. We will have a pre-construction meeting in the next couple of weeks, after which I will give an update on the project timeline and any traffic impacts. I submitted an extension letter to Mass DOT to extend our ability to submit for reimbursement up until September thirtieth in the event there were unexpected delays in the project. But I do not anticipate there will be. Um, we need to use, um, our reimbursement right now for our contract with the state is up until the end of June. Proposals for curbside trash and recycling services are due on April fourteenth, and bids for landscape services for town properties are due April fifteenth. Update on one of my annual goals for nine-twenty-five Mass Ave. On March thirty-first, I had a meeting with Mass DOT, DEP, uh, Department of Environmental Protection, our consultant that performed the Phase Two Environmental Site Assessment, which is the Beta Group, and Mass Development in order to discuss the site and any assurances they could provide that the town would not be a responsible party if we foreclosed on the property. During the meeting, Mass DEP identified possible funding source through the LUST program, which is leaking underground storage, uh, tanks, and this would allow us to take the property, um, after it is cleaned up. Mass DEP also confirmed that there is an exemption for remedial action if the town's intent is to market the property for redevelopment in accordance with the exemption's requirements. If the town were to take the property with the intent to market the property for redevelopment, the town would not be considered a potentially responsible party with liability for response action costs and damages as required by Mass General Law, Chapter Twenty-One, Section Five. Although the municipal exemption applies if the town is marketing the site for redevelopment, the town would need to address any sudden releases, conditions of substantial release migration, or imminent hazards requiring immediate response action if present. The Phase Two Environmental Site Assessment that was performed indicates there are no known conditions requiring an immediate response action. Also, the exemption does not require the town to submit a tier classification unless the town decides to keep the property or conduct comprehensive response actions. The property has been in tax title since two thousand and five, and we have maintained it in tax title and for can foreclose at any point that we determine. At this point, I recommend continuing to work with Mass DEP to see if cleanup can occur before taking the property, even though no known imminent hazards are present, and take the property once the tanks and contaminated soils are removed. We will also be proceeding with having the property surveyed shortly. Correspondence from the, uh, Architectural Preservation District Committee. I received correspondence from the APDC recently on different items, including a request for a copy of the two thousand and seventeen request for proposals to sell the old primary property, a request for an appropriation in the fiscal twenty-two budget for an expense line for the APDC, and that the APDC has become aware through reporting in the ledger that there will be upcoming work on the Ritter and Town Hall. Their correspondence was a reminder that APDC guidelines state that altering any contributing properties must go through the APDC Certificate to Alter Process and Review. Contributing properties in the APD, um, bylaw include private and public buildings. I responded to all of the requests immediately. I forwarded a copy of the RFP and relayed that the budget process began in November and has concluded, but it will include the request for funding for the fall special town meeting. In response to the town building projects, I responded that there were actually three projects on the fiscal twenty-two capital plan, one for building envelope work and handicap ramp at the Ritter Building, and one for, uh, building envelope work at the Town Hall, which will be voted on at the May first annual town meeting. I relayed that I was aware that we will need to have the relevant portions of these projects reviewed by the APDC, but that would not be until after they received town meeting approval, and I anticipated this would not be until after the start of the new fiscal year, July first. Update on the primary school fire alarm upgrade earmark. As reported last week, formal request to include the earmark for the primary school fire alarm upgrade in the end-of-year supplemental budget were sent to the House and Senate Ways and Means Chairs. The end-of-year supplemental budget will occur around the end of June, beginning of July, and Representative Kishmerik will be running point on the continuance in the House, and Senator Cronin will be running point on the continuance in the Senate. It is unlikely there will be any updates as the supplemental budget, um, until after as a supplemental budget is not, um, finalized until the end of the fiscal year. With regards to any possible additional funding in the upcoming fiscal twenty-two state budget, additional funding was included in our legislators' district budget priorities. At this point, the House draft budget, um, will be released later this week or early next week, and from there, amendments will be filed uh, by the end of next week, and the formal votes on those House budget amendments will occur the week of April twenty-sixth. As this was his earmark secured in last year's budget, Representative Sina will be filing the amendment for the fiscal twenty-two earmark, and Representative Kishmerik will be a co-sponsor to that amendment. In other meetings, the TCP Building Design Committee has a meeting tomorrow night at five-thirty PM through Zoom. The Finance Committee has a meeting this Thursday, April eighth, at seven PM through Zoom. And, uh, announcement, the Spring two thousand and twenty-one Yard War, Yard Waste Days are the following Saturdays from eight AM to four PM. April seventeenth, April twenty-fourth, May first, May eighth, May fifteenth, and May twenty-second. More information on this can be found on the DPW page on the town website.
Any questions for the town manager on any of this? Ms. Adams?
Um, we still have our town building hours at ten to two, yes, Monday through Thursday. Um, is there a plan to go back to our standard hours?
Um, yes, we have, uh, particularly one building, we had a positive case, um, for an employee, so we were short-staffed, so, um, that was delayed to the point where, um, probably in the next couple of weeks, I'm hoping that we can get back to opening.
Any other questions for the town manager? Only Mass DEP will, would run a LUST program, by the way, it seems. It seems very.
I know, it sounds.
Apropos.
Not very. In agents, I like. Watch for acronyms. Whenever I need my children, I'd look at their initials to make sure everything was gonna be okay.
I'm telling you, uh.
We're, we're the SB, so.
Uh, one thing I should have mentioned, uh, I don't know, somewhere in this, but why not after the town manager? Everybody, the town manager has presented us with her self-evaluation and her goals update. Everybody has till the end of next week, so by next Friday, you should have scheduled uh, uh, an appointment to go over your draft evaluation of the town manager with her. And then from that point, draft your final, let it gets to me a week or two after, so we can have at the first two meetings, uh, in May, we can have the discussion about the composite uh, evaluation. So please do not miss those deadlines, otherwise it throws off everything, because we kind of leave it right down to the wire each year. Okay. Uh, now, there's a question for the, for the board. Currently, we have a meeting next weekend, the twentieth, but we don't have a meeting the week, the twenty-seventh, which is the last Tuesday of the week, but that's the meeting right before town, town meeting. And the town manager is going to be on vacation on the twentieth, and I'm wondering if it's, is wise to maybe move our meeting, give ourselves off on the twentieth, and have a meeting on the twenty-seventh to handle any last breaking news or any new information that would happen that we may have to vote on before annual town meeting on that Saturday.
I would think that's a prudent thing to do.
I think that's a great idea. Um, it's school vacation week on the twentieth, anyway. I mean, I would imagine that that would be great for those, the board members who are parents to, uh, have some time off that we, as well.
Any objection to moving that twentieth to the twenty-seventh, and we'll take our week off on the twentieth this week, this month? I'm gonna assume silent. Yes. Okay, so our meeting is the twenty-seventh. There will be no April twentieth meeting. Any public comment from the public this evening? Just giving an opportunity. I see, all right. Any public comment from the board this evening? Mr. Jeffries?
All right, yeah, I have a, just a brief one. So as we, every year, there's kind of an informal, uh, committee of residents who come together to try to put together a Memorial Day service for our community. Um, and so this year, I will be, uh, helping to spearhead that effort. So our, we're looking to have our first preliminary meeting this Thursday at six PM. So anyone interested, uh, please, this is not a town affiliated technically. So anyone interested, please, this is not a town-affiliated, technically not a town function, but anyone interested in participating, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. You can contact me if you go to the town website. My email address is there. I'll give my phone number as well. It's five zero eight six six two one nine one four. That's my cell phone. You can also call me. If you Google search, you can also Google search my name, Michael Ray Jeffries, the director, too. I have a website. You can also contact me that way. So again, if you're interested in participating, we're gonna have our initial meeting this coming Thursday, two days from now, at six PM. And again, anyone in the community who has a heart for those who've served or who personally have been touched by those who've served and want to offer your support, please don't hesitate to reach out. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael Ray, and thank you for spearheading that effort. Any other public comment from the board? Okay, before we adjourn, we do have an executive session. So I would entertain a motion, we enter into executive session and to adjourn after exiting the executive session, which will be a separate Zoom, by the way. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty, Section twenty-one, Paragraph three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares. This is regarding the Municipal Employees Union, the Fire Union, and the DPW Union.
I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, there's a roll call vote. Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Marino?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Aye from my death. I want to wish everyone a good night. We will see you next Tuesday. We will break to executive session now.